Call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, August 20, 2020. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Freilias, we please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Geisler.
Here.
Commissioner Heikola.
Here.
Commissioner Knoblock.
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki.
Here.
Chair Schwartz.
Here.
And Commissioner Bradley, I don't know if he's joining us remotely, so we'll note him as absent. We do have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move adoption.
I'll second.
Motion by Heikola, second by Schmalki. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Agenda is adopted. Next, we have the approved minutes from our July 16 meeting.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I move that we approve the minutes to the July 16 meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Knoblock, second by Casey. Any corrections or additions? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Minutes are approved. On to our first order of new business, Planning Case 20-10, Land Use Plan Amendment from Low Density Residential to High Density Residential at 841 Northdale Boulevard, SO Properties. Mr. Freilias.
Mr. Chair, so both this item and the following item, number two, PC 20-11, are items that we are recommending based on conversations we had with the applicant that be postponed until the September meeting. The applicant did submit a land use amendment application as well as a zone change, and we've had several conversations with them last week and ultimately concluded that there were still many unanswered questions about their proposal. And in discussions with them, based on the questions that we had, they asked for the opportunity to delay this until the, or defer it until the September 17 meeting. Because that happened after we had sent out the public notices, it's quite possible that there may be some residents who did receive those notices and showed up this evening, what we would recommend on both this item and the following one is to open up the public hearing and then continue it to September 17. We don't have a formal presentation, so I think if we were to take comments, there would just be lots of questions. So we would recommend continuing it. If people want to provide public testimony, they can do that at the 17th. If they're not available that night, once this item comes back, we'll obviously have more information. They can certainly ask questions or enter comments into the record if they can't attend on the 17th. So no formal presentation, but if the commission would open the public hearing and then continue it to the 17th for both this item and the next one, that would be our recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Freilias. At this time, I will open the public hearing in Planning Case 20-10, Land Use Plan Amendment from Low Density Residential to High Density Residential at 841 Northdale Boulevard. Anyone here that wishes to speak to the plan at this time, knowing that we have no information and cannot answer any questions that you may have? Please give your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Debbie Cubus. I live at 843 Northdale Boulevard. My property is immediately west, and we have adjoining property lines of this 841 property. I have a lot of concerns, and I know some of the neighbors do too. I had talked to Scott Harlecker a couple times, most recently this morning, and he talked about that one of the, although he doesn't have, you know, as you say, you don't have all the information because the applicant hasn't really submitted everything, but he talked about that, you know, he didn't know whether or not the applicant wanted to combine the properties or keep them separate, possibly even demolishing, I mean, 841 and 839, which is the big brown apartment buildings they also own. And so he said that he wasn't sure if they wanted to try and combine those properties or keep them separate, possibly demolish them and start over, which honestly, I am not opposed to that. Those properties are definitely old and overrun, and they haven't really been taken care of. What some of the concerns are, though, is as far as 841, whether, you know, what would go in there? How would we maintain privacy and setbacks? What exactly would be built? How many units? And as far as like the setbacks and spacing around whatever is there, would it go all the way out to the street, or would it be more in line with the properties that are along there? There's also some issues as far as the elevation, because it's from east to west, it kind of goes downhill, and from south to go north, it goes uphill and then goes downhill. If they were to demolish 841 and try to level it out, half of my yard is going to fall My fence is going to go. We already have some issues as far as, because it does go uphill and then goes back downhill, we have a walkout, and 841 actually has a tuck-in garage on our side of the property. You know, our fence already kind of washes out every time. We have to sometimes, you know, we have to go out there with a shovel, put the dirt back up. It would also, there's a concern, and then if they weren't to demolish it and just keep the landscape as it is, depending on what would be built, what would be the height of those buildings? Because they're already higher than me, and then my neighbor is lower than me. You know, I mean, it's funny, because a lot of people say, you know, "Oh, you live, you know, relatively close to the Mississippi River whenever there's flooding and stuff." And, you know, "Do you get flooded?" Well, if I get flooded, my neighbor's underwater, because our level ground is at the top of their house. There's, you know, this is not the first time that this particular property has come before the Planning Commission as far as trying to change things up. The problem has been, you know, their plans have been terrible. They don't consider the neighborhood. They aren't trying to do what's best. They aren't really trying to improve it. What has happened in the past is they're, you know, they're trying to come in and make a quick buck. They buy the property, they try to turn around, and they've already got it planned to sell before they even come here, which is really a problem. I do have, like I say, this has come before the Planning Commission before. I did, on Tuesday night, I went and took some pictures of both 841, which is the house, and 839, which is the apartment buildings, because the apartments now own the house. Granted, the house was just purchased in May, but the apartments, they have owned for over four years. And I'll pass these. This is for the apartments, this one for everybody, and then this one is for the house.
First of all, ma'am, we can't talk anything apart about the apartment building, because that's not part of this plan.
Well, the reason-
The apartment building is totally irrelevant to what we have to discuss. And then secondly, we normally limit speaking to five minutes, and you're getting off and close to that now, so please try to wrap up what you have to say.
Okay. Well, I guess my point is between, because it's the same owner, and things have not necessarily been maintained. For example, today, like I said, I took these pictures on Tuesday, and at 841, they're only half mowing the grass. The backyard is only half mowed. Today, they came and they mowed again, and again, they still didn't. They only half mowed, only half mowed the grass. I guess I'm also wondering, because if they're talking about, you know, possibly combining those properties, you know, are they looking at also purchasing other properties? The little white apartment, which is 837, or part of the woods, which is part of the church property? I know you guys, I kind of heard you, I heard you talking a little bit about the pedestrian path that is right on the border there of 841 and the driveway for the apartments, and honestly, that actually came to be because of a previous situation where an owner tried to split the lots here. And we have been at this particular address for over 30 years, and we knew that that pedestrian path was there, but it was not being maintained. It essentially crumbled until it was non-existent and pretty much forgotten. And part of the thing that happened with 841 is in talking about the fact that that particular property has no driveway. It was totally missed years and years ago when, you know, to be in compliance, you had to have a driveway. They totally missed it just because of the layout. But now, they put in the pedestrian path. I don't know that it's necessarily used, but it was a deterrent to the people trying to split the lot and essentially make it a flagpole. But now, for 841, what happened is they somehow or other got permission to drive over that pedestrian path, but every single person who has lived there has taken it to the extreme, and it's like, okay, we drive in the backyard, we drive in the front yard, we make a U-turn, we drive in the side yard, we, they drive wherever they want. There's no driveway. I'm not opposed to it being developed, but it has to be done the right way. And that being said, as far as that pedestrian path, being that pedestrian path was put in as part of a, you know, a thing that happened a while ago, and it's really not used, it's really kind of even hard to tell that it is a pedestrian path, I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, the city moving that or taking it out and allowing them to actually combine 841 and 839 all together and make something that's really nice and complimentary to the neighborhood. So.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up now, because you talked well over the five minutes.
All right. Yeah, I guess that's about all I have until, you know, they submit some more information. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I address the commission and-
Mr. Freilias.
Thank you.
First of all, Ms. Cubus raises some very good questions, and frankly, they were questions that we as staff had and were concerned about enough to discuss with the applicant that probably would be in their best interest to, you know, delay this until the next meeting. Just to maybe explain to both her and any other residents that might be here this evening, you know, typically, the way that the city, the Planning Commission has addressed these types of items is to take just the land use or the zoning question, policy question, which often does not have, as the commission knows, does not have a lot of detail. It's a policy decision on whether the use is appropriate, whether the use should be changed, how does it fit with the comp plan. There's all kinds of big policy questions that the Planning Commission and the council ultimately have to wrestle with before we get into any of the kinds of details that would typically be asked. I think what's unusual about this is that it is a single-family property. It is in a neighborhood that is mostly single-family residential. So there are some, I think, unique characteristics to it that if it is to be part of a larger development, it may make sense to at least kind of understand that concept. I know that's not typically the way that we've operated, but the concern that we have at the staff level is that there probably are going to be a lot of questions, some of which we've heard this evening, and frankly, I think it's in the best interest of the city and the developer, or the applicant, I guess, I don't know if it's really a developer, to sort of explain that broader context. You know, I think if we could do this over, we probably would have tried to vet that before we had sent out the public hearing notice, but as happened in this case and can in other situations, you know, we prepare a staff report, we spend time looking at it, we have to provide notice in advance, so we send those out. You know, certainly, I think if we could have done this differently, we might have suggested that the applicant do their homework before they had presented this, but it is what it is, where it is tonight. I guess I would just suggest, and it's at the discretion of the chair, whether you want to take additional testimony. One of my concerns would be if we take additional testimonies, that we could be here for a while, and we're not going to have any additional questions. And so I think maybe, just in the interest of those who have shown up tonight, not to waste their time, to be respectful of their time, if they wanted to save their questions, we would then hopefully have those, some of those answers on the 17th. We sincerely apologize that this went out and that people showed up tonight. I know that that is not the most convenient thing to show up for an evening meeting. We do, you know, regret that, but the applicant is ultimately the one that made the decision, and I think just in the best interest of those that are here in attendance and the city and the applicant, probably just continue the hearing and accept comments on the 17th. But I'll leave it to you, Mr. Chair, if you want to accept additional testimony.
Thank you. With that information in mind, did anybody else wish to speak tonight, knowing that you can speak next month at the meeting after we have information?
Can I just ask a question?
Well, we're not going to be able to answer any question.
I think you may be able to answer this question, would you be able to give the information of the plan in advance, or if we're not at the meeting on the 17th?
So, Mr. Chair, so the question was, you know, what, so whatever information we have from the developer that they're willing to put into the record, we would make that part of the Planning Commission application. Typically, that comes out, you know, in advance of the meeting. I know we like at least a week. I think this week it went out on Monday, so I think we would do our best to try and provide as much notice. So whatever the developer is prepared to share with us, to share with the commission and the public, we would make that available. So to the extent that there is this broader plan, there's more information on their long-term plan, which is what we've been encouraging, as well as talking to the neighbors, we would do that, for sure.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we will then continue the public hearing on this matter to the meeting on September 17, leaving the public hearing open. Commission, anyone wish to make a motion to continue this case to the September meeting?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
In Planning Case 20-10, I move that we continue this public hearing till September 17 meeting and postpone action on the item to the same meeting.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Geisler. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? This case is then continued to September 17. Our next case is the matching case for the zone change in Planning Case 20-11, the zone change, changing the zoning from Low Density Residential to the High Density Residential at 841 Northdale Boulevard. Mr. Freilias, I doubt that you have anything else to add at this time for this one?
Mr. Chair, I think my previous remarks would apply to this one as well.
All right. I will then open this public hearing and again, ask if anyone wishes to speak tonight, knowing we have no answers to any questions. Seeing none, we will then continue this public hearing also to the September 17 meeting. And Commission, motion-
Mr. Chair, in Planning Case 20-11, I will again move that we continue the public hearing till the September 17 meeting and postpone action on this item to the same meeting.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Geisler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Meeting is then, this case is then also continued to our September 17 meeting. Thank you. Our third case for the evening is Planning Case 20-13, site plan for a 600-square-foot coffee shop at 10122 Egrit Boulevard. Reprise Design, Mr. Freilias.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have a customary PowerPoint presentation tonight, as I explained to the commission in email earlier today, filling in for Scott Harlecker, our city planner, who normally would be here this evening. So I, you know, don't have as much background information, admittedly. I tried to get up to speed as quickly as I could in the last few days, so certainly just want to acknowledge that upfront and appreciate your patience as we work through this and then work through any questions that you may have this evening. So as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, this is an application by Reprise Design on behalf of Caribou Coffee. They're seeking a site plan approval, dimensional design, and use flexibilities for a 600-square-foot coffee shop, otherwise known as a Caribou Coffee Cabin, which is a newer retail concept. And I don't know if the applicant is on the line, has joined the call remotely, but if we get to the point where they're available to provide additional information, they can certainly do that. This particular site is located at the, I guess you'd call it the southwest corner of Egrit and Coon Rapids Boulevard. There is also a corresponding plat that the Planning Committee, preliminary plat to the Planning Commission will consider following this item. So the actions tonight will be this presentation that I'm going to provide, an opportunity for the Planning Commission to ask questions. We do need to conduct a public hearing, and because this is, this particular parcel is in the River Rapids Overlay District, we have a couple of things that the Planning Commission is going to consider, and then at least one item that the council will consider. So the commission is really considering the site plan and the dimensional and design flexibilities. You will then also need to make a separate recommendation to the city council on the use flexibility. So a lot of moving parts, and I'll kind of walk through those as we go through this proposal tonight and discuss those applications in a moment. So the site is currently vacant. It is owned, this is just kind of additional information for your benefit, owned by the city's HRA. There is an unrelated purchase agreement that the parties have entered into the HRA and Caribou Coffee for the sale of the land. As I mentioned, the parcel actually is zoned office, that's the underlying zoning, and it is in our River Rapids Overlay District. So when we evaluate a proposal, River Rapids Overlay District, for the most part, is everything along Coon Rapids Boulevard all the way over to the river, we have to apply both the standard site plan considerations as well as the River Rapids Overlay District. So we have kind of that heightened level of scrutiny when we're looking at a proposal like this one. All right. So the next screen that we have here is the site plan, and I'll talk a little bit about kind of the main features of the site plan. One of the things that's important to point out that the commission and/or the public that may have looked at this, may be asking questions about, that's not, I don't think, well-known. There's a rather significant power line easement, I just wanted to mention this, that really runs through roughly a third of the site. So in addition to kind of its odd configuration, we have an overhead power line easement that creates some challenges for the development of this site, and we'll talk a little bit about how that is addressed through the various flexibilities that are being sought by the applicant. So main access into the site is off of, this is Egrit Boulevard, Coon Rapids Boulevard. Main access into the site will be off of the service road along Coon Rapids Boulevard. Traffic flow into the site is anticipated to be primarily one-way, so vehicles will enter off of the service road, they'll then transition to kind of the left-hand side, where they'll be stacking into, stacking area to then, I guess, for service into the Caribou Coffee. I had a little bit of a lost thought there for a second. Where people will then order their coffee off of a menu board. This is primarily a drive-through oriented retail concept, although there is some walk-up, a walk-up component to it, which I'll talk about in a moment. So traffic will flow in one-way. If people are going through the drive-through, they'll then go to the menu board, place their order, and then they'll approach the main building, which is located here, with a drive-through window, and then exit the site. The building itself is 600 square feet. In this particular district, 2,000 square feet is the minimum standard. So in order to consider this, we'll have to look at design flexibility, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. The drive-through component is another feature of this that is going to require use flexibility. Within the River Rapids Overlay District, we do not allow drive-throughs, so this is a bit of an unusual request. So in order to consider it, we need to consider use flexibility, which is allowed under, would be allowed under our code, assuming we, you know, agree with the arguments that are being made by the applicant. Another issue that I wanted to identify with the site plan is the building setback. So this is the building, and we'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. That is set back 20 feet from Coon Rapids Boulevard, from the right-of-way, or property line. 22 feet is required, so that will, in order for us to consider, that will require design flexibility. There will be directional signage, it doesn't show up real well on this particular plan, but if I could zoom in, you would see the directional signage that will help patrons that are coming to this particular store to kind of know where to go. Whenever you get into these one-way access, traffic flow plans, that's one of the things that we obviously are concerned about and want to make sure that there's adequate flow and that the site is designed to accommodate that. We think there's actually adequate stacking for cars that are then waiting in line, so we don't necessarily see that as an issue. As I mentioned, there is a walk-up window. I believe this is on the Coon Rapids Boulevard side of the building. One of the things that we'll talk about in a moment is there will be no interior space for customers. So unlike a typical coffee shop that has this, you know, the service area, the food prep area, beverage prep area, there's often, you know, interior space, tables for people to have, you know, to sit and dine or enjoy their coffee in this case. This is not a concept that is contemplated for this. So it's strictly drive-through, and then there is a patio on, I guess this is the east side of the property, where there'll be more than likely seasonal use of that patio for any, anyone who wants to either walk up and purchase products at this location, or someone who may want to drive and park and then enjoy their beverage on the patio. The drive aisle turning loop, there is also an issue there with setbacks. Again, this is a very unusual site. I can say in my five-plus-year tenure, I don't know that we've seen one with this many- I can say in my five-plus-year tenure, I don't know that we've seen one with this many design flexibilities, but I think it is an unusual site, and as we'll talk about in a moment, I think there are rationales for considering all these elements. Pedestrian access is also provided off of Egritt Boulevard and then Coon Rapids Boulevard. They have a sidewalk, which I believe this connects the path that's along Egritt and then the trail along Coon Rapids Boulevard into that patio area and the walk-up window. There is a stormwater basin, as the Planning Commission knows, on developments of this type, you have to handle stormwater, and so they have a stormwater basin. So that's an area where they'll manage any of their surface water runoff on the site. There's also a dumpster enclosure, which is located here. We don't have an elevation drawing of that, but the plan did note that it's to be a wood structure. And so one of the recommendations that we would have for the Planning Commission is that that be constructed of brick or stone to match, to match the materials of the building. One thing that's not on this plan, and we've had some conversations about it today, is it does not show any ground signage. It's my understanding that there had been conversations, if you can envision this property, I had a, there we go. Okay, I had a, an aerial. There is a sign for the regional dam. I think it's a sign that Anoka County Parks owns and maintains, and there's an agreement that we discovered today between the city and the county for that sign, which dates back to, I think, 2001. So that is a permitted sign. I think back when that was originally constructed and approved, I believe there was a variance that was issued for that. So that sign really is not part of this proposal. It's an existing sign. There's an agreement for the county to have that there. I think Caribou had originally talked about possibly sharing signage, and I had heard anecdotally this afternoon that that, that those conversations may not have gone as Caribou had hoped. So Caribou will have their own ground signage. In the River Rapids Overlay District, there are requirements that it be a monument-style sign. So it will, it'll have to be a ground sign, and it'll have to have design elements that match the building. That's not part of this plan, but they would, they would need to seek a signed permit for that at the appropriate time. So those are the major elements of the site plan. Next is the grading plan. Just a few details I wanted to point out. As I mentioned, the primary, primary feature on this is the stormwater basin, which will handle most of the runoff. I don't know if they, how this site is balanced from a soil standpoint, if they have to bring in any soil or export any soil. I don't, I don't know if they've gotten to that level of detail, or they certainly haven't shared it with us at this point. But there are catch basins, which are located here, and a stormwater pipe that will then go into the pond to handle the stormwater, surface water that collects on the site. The landscape plan, I think, is one of the impressive elements of this. So there are a number of things that I wanted to point out. It includes a mix of large overstory trees around the property, maples, hackberry, honey locusts. There's also some larger evergreen trees. I looked at this earlier, and I don't remember exactly where those are, but you can see, you can, you know, you can kind of judge from the scale, some of the larger overstory and evergreen trees. There are some ornamental trees, which include lilac, service berry, crab apple, and then quite a bit of shrubs and ground-level plantings. I counted 13 in total on their landscape plan. So I think for a, for a development of this, of this type and this size, it's, well, this is my own personal professional opinion, I think it's a fairly impressive landscape plan. One thing I wanted to point out, that there is an existing, as many of you are probably aware, there's a community garden, for lack of a better term, which as I understand it, the group that is maintaining that or responsible for maintaining that is no longer interested in doing that. That will be removed as part of this project. And so another recommendation that we would have in addition to the dumpster enclosure is that if that garden, or when that garden is removed, that it be replaced with similar landscaping to what is provided on, on the plan that you see before you. All right. A little bit about the building itself. We have building elevations, which are shown here. So in the top left-hand corner, this is the east elevation, which would face Coon Rapids Boulevard, and I believe this is the walk-up window. This is a one-story design. This is another one of the design flexibilities that we'll talk a little bit about that would be needed in order to consider this particular proposal. We do require, or the code requires two-story expression within the River Rapids Overlay District. The west elevation, which is located here, kind of in the, in the lower right-hand corner, this would be the main service drive for the drive-through window. South elevation faces Egritt Boulevard, and then the north elevation is the service elevation, service door for employees and deliveries. It's a, it's a Northwoods cabin design motif, I guess is what you would call it, or theme, a mix of exterior materials, including a stone base that you see here, hardy plank siding and a metal roof. I will note, this is another, another flexibility that we need to consider, that the plan, our code requires a slightly higher amount of stone, 30%, and what they're showing is 27% when we do the calculation on these longer elevations. And I guess what is considered 18% on the gable end elevations. And then, secondly, we have a higher percentage of glass, 60% glass would be required in our overlay district. 26% is proposed. So in order to consider this, we need to consider design flexibility. So last thing I wanted to show you before I run through the kind of summary of the various flexibilities is the floor plan, just to provide you with a sense. This is essentially the business side of the operation. There is, there is nothing that the public can access within this floor plan. There will be a restroom, but that'll be for employees only. So for the most part, it's, you know, food, beverage storage, preparation areas, and then the two service windows for the drive-through and the walk-up. I wanted to summarize for the Commission and anyone who may be watching, because there's a lot of moving parts to this, a lot of different pieces, and so I thought it would be helpful to just kind of briefly summarize, I won't go through all the details that's in the staff report, what the, what the flexibilities are, kind of in the hierarchy of issues that the Planning Commission should, should consider tonight. So the first is use flexibility. As I mentioned earlier, drive-throughs are not allowed in the River Rapids Overlay District. Among the things that we can consider on use flexibility for this particular proposal, it is a challenging site. We talked about, or I talked about, the utility easement. It is a relatively small parcel. It's about an acre in size. It is an odd shape. It can really only accommodate a small building. So I think from a use standpoint, it's something that's worthwhile considering. The plan does provide a number of amenities, particularly buffers. There's a lot of landscaping to help with screening. Drive-through is one of the common concerns that you get from the public is headlights, vehicle headlights, and so I think the landscape is intended to address that. So from a use standpoint, I think we're, we're comfortable with that. The other reality is, and you as residents of Coon Rapids probably know this very well, that there is a lot of interest, I think, in retail along Coon Rapids Boulevard. That used to be our main commercial corridor. That changed. And now the fact that there is sort of renewed interest, albeit on a smaller scale, for retail along Coon Rapids Boulevard, in this case it is vehicle-dependent, I think that is, is something for us to consider. This is, use flexibility is the only one of the items tonight that is a recommendation from the Planning Commission. The City Council will ultimately make that determination, or decision, I should say, as it relates to use flexibility, but the Commission needs to make a recommendation as part of your deliberations tonight. The other issues relate to design and dimensional flexibilities, which the Commission is charged with making that decision on. So I'll talk a little bit, again, just as a recap, kind of what those are. So the design flexibilities, again, minimum building size, 2,000 square feet. This is a 600-square-foot building, a little bit unusual. I don't, I don't recall in my entire professional career that I've ever seen anything this small. So this is, this is certainly a first. But I think the site conditions really sort of limit how big of a building you can construct on a property like this, and I think it is a very, you know, I think it's a good design. The issue of two-story expression, which the code requires, in this case it's a one-story design, you know, the site constraints really limit the building, I think, to try and create the sense of a two-story building, probably creates some massing issues and maybe something that might, might be out of scale. So I think relative to the size of the site and some of the other constraints, a one-story design does, does seem to work, and I don't think it's inappropriate, given its scale. Couple of the other, or few of the other design flexibilities, the question of stone. So we have a 30% requirement. They don't quite meet that. They're close. They do have a good mix of materials, I think, given, again, the scale and size of the building. I don't think our sensibilities are offended by what they're requesting, so I think they're, they're, they're meeting the spirit and intent of what we're trying to accomplish in the River Rapids Overlay District. Same thing with the glass. Code requires 60% glass along the Coon Rapids Boulevard facade. In this case, it's 26%, so it's about half. But again, I think this design does account for some glass that's appropriate to the size and scale of the building, so we don't think that that's inappropriate. Building setback is another design flexibility that would be needed to consider this. In this district, 22 feet is required, and in this case, 20 feet is what's shown. I think the site configuration and the site constraints that we've talked about really kind of explain why, you know, a two-foot deviation from what we would typically require is appropriate. The other thing about this site plan is shifting the building farther towards the corner does help anchor that corner. All along Coon Rapids Boulevard, we've been trying to encourage development out towards the corner. Probably didn't envision this back in the day, but I think this, again, is another light touch, if you will, that addresses, I think, some of the design concerns that we've had over the years about good design, good quality development along Coon Rapids Boulevard. The dimensional flexibility is this last piece I was going to mention. The first relates to parking setbacks. So 20 feet is required. Under our code, 10 feet is what is shown. Again, I'll go back to my comments about the unusual, unusual nature of this site. If, if they were to, I guess, conform with the, with the setback, that would create all kinds of issues related to that turning radius of their drive aisle and make it almost unusable in that sense. So we think it's reasonable that, that the 10 feet would apply in this instance. The other topic that we often spend a lot of time on, as you know, is parking. And in this case, 25 stalls would be required, 16 is what's shown on the plan. Again, I think the nature of this use, the fact that it is more drive-in oriented, I think kind of reflects maybe less of a parking demand than, than otherwise we might require. And I think, given the other considerations, landscaping and some of the amenities that they're trying to build in, you know, not building out the maximum amount of parking, we think would, would make sense in this particular instance. What else was I going to mention? I guess the last thing that I was going to state then. So our, our recommendation tonight would, for the site plan, would be to approve it as presented. We've listed eight different conditions in the staff report. I did make reference to the additional landscaping and the dumpster enclosure, so I would suggest that, that we consider those as well tonight. Also recommending that the Planning Commission then make the appropriate findings for granting use flexibility. That would be a recommendation to the City Council. And then there will be findings for granting design and dimensional flexibilities. As I mentioned, I don't know if the applicant has tuned in, but when we get to the, to the public hearing, certainly they would be welcome to, to chime in and provide any additional details that I maybe haven't covered tonight. So that concludes my longer-than-usual presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Freneles. Commission, any questions for Mr. Freneles before we continue any further?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So I just am glancing at those recommendations, and number seven, what, what does it mean by the enclosure must be constructed of brick or stone? It talks about the walkway.
Trash enclosure.
Are we moving, because it talked about connection between the patio and the trail, and then is it trash enclosure, do you think, that's referenced there?
Yeah, I think seven's meant to be two separate items, the walking path connecting and then the trash enclosure.
Yeah, 7B.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So that was my, I thought maybe there was a little gateway on that trail from the, I didn't know, so, okay.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nablock.
I have a question for Mr. Freneles. In regards to the building for the signage that says Caribou Coffee, isn't, is that part of the application, or does that have to be dealt with a separate signed permit?
Chair Schwartz and Commissioner Nablock, no. So that would require a separate permit, so that's not part of the action tonight. So the signage that's shown is largely for illustrative purposes. The Commission is not actually approving that tonight. The applicant will have to come in for a signed permit, and they'll have to conform to our signed standards.
And I have a second follow-up question, Mr. Chair Schwartz. And the second question I have is, I know it's a unique lot and a unique location. What about traffic flow in and out of, like, on, off of, like, from Coon Rapids Boulevard onto Egritt and then onto the service road? Because I, there's also been the school next to it has been developing a lot of different traffic flows and patterns, as I think we looked at in the last month or two as well. So my question is traffic flow.
Commissioner Nablock, that's a good question. I know you and I had an email exchange prior, prior to the meeting, and you had, you had raised that as a, as a, as a question or concern. And my response was, you know, there are, our engineering staff did look at this plan. There's a number of comments that they have provided. That was not one of them. I do think it's a legitimate question. You know, I, as I explained in my email to you, you know, this particular proposal, Caribou Coffee, is on what would be considered kind of the, the morning side of Coon Rapids Boulevard or the morning commute side. Typically, when retailers look at locations, they're either looking for afternoon commute locations or morning commute locations, because this is coffee generally, morning commute locations are preferred. So I think the biggest issue with that really is in, is in the morning. And, you know, it's, it's a legitimate concern, although I think what the applicant has done with their site plan is they have provided adequate stacking for vehicles that are waiting in line. So I think, you know, the ideal scenario is if there are any issues, you keep them on private property as opposed to, that, you know, become problems for, on public streets. So, you know, we think that there's adequate parking, there's adequate stacking areas for vehicles. Obviously, there will, there's development adjacent in Port Riverwalk with Centra Home. Obviously, there will, there's development adjacent in Port Riverwalk with Centra Homes, so there will be additional traffic there. I think the biggest issue would be if any of that traffic wants to go west, crossing over onto the, to the service drive, maybe to get to the school. I suppose there could be concerns at, at some point. But I don't think it was enough of an issue that our engineering staff felt like it would be an impediment to.
Okay, thank you.
Recommend denial, yeah.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Frenelius, the one question I had is, I didn't see anything in the engineering comments, but is the turning radius in there sufficient for emergency vehicles to make that clearance? The, with the road only being about 15 feet at the exit there, that's a, it's a pretty tight turn for a bigger truck, let alone, I mean, passenger vehicle for, for one side.
Right. Commissioner Geisler, that's a good question. You know, that is something that our staff will have to look at. I don't, you know, I don't know if it was analyzed for that. You know, what I can tell you, just as kind of a side comment, you know, the way, I'm not an expert on our fire department by any means, but I, I do know that they've been transitioning to different vehicles that allow them to, you know, provide those services on smaller, unique sites like this. Certainly, if that's an issue, they'll have to address it. But I believe it's sufficient for the types of vehicles that, you know, on the, on the occasion that they would need to provide emergency services, fire services, I think they could, that this would work. But if that ultimately becomes an issue in discussions with our fire marshal, then we'll have to address it.
Thank you.
Mr. Schmalki.
So one quick question I had has to do with the, the connection at the corner of EGRIT and Coon Rapids Boulevard. Do we know if the sidewalk is going to be extended or connected to the patio area? Or is there going to be a walkway that would bring pedestrians from that corner to the site? I didn't see one, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, Commissioner Schmalki, I believe that's, I don't know if you can see what I'm pointing at, but I believe that's a part of the intent here is for this sidewalk will provide pedestrian connections to the patio and to the service window from EGRIT. And there's also a sidewalk that will then provide access to the trail along Coon Rapids Boulevard as well.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So Mr. Frenelius, do you know hours of operation? I thought at some point we heard number of staff, they wouldn't exceed five or something in, in there. But what kind of hours?
Yeah, Commissioner Casey, that's a good question. I don't know what, what their, their hours of operation are.
Okay. Yeah, there's one out in Big Lake that they have a prototype out there. But I, I haven't been out that way lately to stop, just to see how it works. But they're on a corner too.
Okay.
And you also talked about the high, or the existing power lines that were a constraint on this lot in terms of, does the drive-through go under them? The drive-through lanes go under them, but the building, of course, isn't impacted.
Correct. Commissioner Casey, yes. So the, the power line easement, you know, my understanding and my experience, the way that these work is that you can't put structures or buildings within a power line easement, or any easement for that matter, typically. But you can do things like drive aisles, landscaping, parking, those kinds of things. So that's, I don't think that's gonna be, be an issue in this case. The building is outside of that, so.
Yeah, yeah. It just kind of seemed to push the, the building east, you know, the, the whole plan, site plan east because of that.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Frenelius, I've got a few questions. Going to the floor plan, on, on our copy of the floor plan, in the upper left, it says future restroom.
Chair Schwartz, I guess I can't read that, but if that's in fact what it, what it says. I guess my comment to that is that, you know, this has not gone through the building permit review phase. That's something that we will do, you know, following, if it, if this is, if this is ultimately approved, that's something that we will do. I will tell you, as I was preparing tonight, I was looking for the same thing, wondering where is the restroom? And then I, and then I discovered it. You know, my, my understanding is if they're gonna have an operation like this, they'll have to have a restroom. I don't think they can open it without one. I think our code would require that, but we haven't gotten to that level of review at this point.
Then the next question I have pertains to the parking. If you go back to the, wrong yet, well, that one there is fine too. The parking area closest to the building on the furthest right side, you've got the first lane is, their stall is designated for handicap. The next two stalls are designated order ahead stalls. And then when you move to the furthest, the, the, the back aisle, the, the first two on the right side are for weight stalls. So in essence, you're taking away five of the 60, 16 parking stalls, designating them as specialty use stalls, leaving only 11 stalls ordinary stalls. And if they're gonna have up to five employees working, they're using almost 50% of the parking stalls just for employees. I don't believe there's sufficient parking on, on this plan for even this size building that we have.
Chair Schwartz, so, I mean, that's a, that's a good question. And frankly, that's a level of detail I didn't capture when I was looking at it in advance of the meeting. You know, I think from, from a approval standpoint or a code standpoint, you know, we're really looking at sort of the overall amount of parking. You know, I think it probably would be worth a conversation for staff to have with the applicant about, you know, how does that really work in, in practice? Because I think you raise a good question. I mean, if you have stalls that are signed for customers doing certain kinds of things, what's left for, for then customers that just show up and wanna park and have a coffee out on the patio? And how, you know, how, how strongly enforced is that by onsite management? So I think it's a, I think it's a, it's a good question. I don't know from a, from an approval standpoint. And I, you know, I think we certainly wouldn't, well, I guess we would, we would defer to, to the applicant in terms of, is that, does that, has that created issues on other similar kinds of projects? I think there's, if I remember correctly, five or so of these that have been developed in the metro, including one, I don't know if it's completed or if it's under construction. And Fridley, I didn't have a chance to look. Now, obviously, the site could be a little bit different. But I think that would be a good question for the applicant to kind of understand how, how that functions in practice.
And then the next question I have, if you could go to that overhead view that showed the, yeah, that one there is fine. Could you show approximately where their lot is on this?
Sure. So roughly, it's this area here. And that power, excuse me. The power line easement roughly is this area that has been, doesn't have any vegetation. And so one of the things we did not discuss, but it is in their plan, is, you know, they're gonna remove a number of, a number of trees. Obviously, they're gonna replace a lot of it with, with the landscaping that they're, that they're proposing. But that easement takes up, you know, my rough estimate is about a third of the, a third of the site. So that, I think the, the property line is roughly in this location here.
All right. And then you made comment that the organization that's handling the garden, is the garden just the upper or the, the right side of, of their lot? Or is the garden also stuffed to the left of the power lines?
Chair Schwartz, it's my, I actually had a couple of other, see if they show up. Uh, I don't know if it shows up in this drawing. It's my understanding that that community garden is, a portion of it is on the property, the property that they're gonna buy, Caribou is gonna buy. And part of it, I believe, is actually within a county right of way. And so the, the group that had, has maintained that in the past is not interested in doing that. There was some email communication this afternoon between our community development staff and engineering public work staff. And so our park staff is not interested in maintaining it either. So I think that will ultimately be removed. And whatever is on their property will, will then have to be, they'll have to replace it with, with landscaping. So, you know, my recollection is, I don't think that that garden has been ma, has been maintained, maintained this year and it may have not been maintained in the last couple of years. So I think this will be an improvement over what is there right now.
And then if you could go to the, to that other overhead, the original one? Yeah, that's fine, yeah. The driveway for the property then would be where?
Let me go back to the site plan. So the driveway appears that it would extend over here.
And the black line on that overhead drawing, was that, was that the lot, the lot line?
Yes, that's correct. Well, a rough approximation of the lot line, right? We're kind of imposing that on an aerial photo. There's a little bit of, of skewing that goes on. I did, I did get an email earlier today that there are some discussions, because portion of this is still city property, that there's an easement that will be required to allow them to have access. That's not part of, I don't believe that's part of their site. So there's a cross-access easement, I believe, is what I heard about this afternoon, that would be required in order for this to, to proceed.
And I'm somewhat concerned that that driveway is awful close to the corner of the service drive with EGRIT Boulevard.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the scale in front of me to know what that is. My recollection, because these conversations have been going on for probably three months. There was a previous iteration of this plan where that driveway was even closer to EGRIT Boulevard. And so I think in discussions that we've had with them, we encouraged, encouraged them to shift it as far, I guess that would be west, as they could. So I think this is, this is sort of the limits of, of what they can do.
All right, that's all I have for right now.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heckel.
I'm just kind of wondering about the in-and-out traffic. This is the one in-and-out, is all the traffic going in and out through that one space, correct?
Yeah, Commissioner Heckel, that's correct, yep. So it is, it is two-way traffic into the site, but it's one-way circulation once you enter the site.
And if they come out and, and take a left to go out, there's still sufficient space for one row of cars to go out and two rows of cars to come in?
Yes, yep, that's correct.
Chair Schwartz, go ahead. Commissioner Schmalki.
So I want to go back to the, to the parking issue just a little bit here. Because I think, I think you raised a lot of good points. But I also wanna, again, go back to the, the business plan, which is, again, that this is intended to be more of a drive-up. They do have that patio, there's very limited seating on there. My guess is, is that, that seating will be used more by people that do walk-up service as opposed to people that drive there. I still see the spaces that they have designated for the order ahead and so forth as those are still planned spots for the public, the, the customers of the site. And again, considering the size of this, there's no indoor seating or anything like that. I, I just personally don't have any issue with the amount of spaces. It's a good call-out, but I, I just feel like it is addressed, knowing the nature of the building and the business.
They're usually kind of transitory too. You're waiting maybe just to get a special order, they bring it out, and you're gone.
Commissioner Nablock.
Chair Schwartz, my question is for Mr. Frenelius. Who owns the lot to the west, the wooded area between the school and the proposed corner lot there?
Commissioner Nablock, I don't know definitively. I didn't, I didn't research that. I, I don't know that I have the ability to answer that at this moment. But I suspect it may be the city because, again, in my earlier comment related to a cross-access easement for this driveway. So I suspect that it, it may be city property, but that's just speculation on my part.
Yeah, that's the reason for my question, because if an easement's required, it'd be, if the property is owned by the city, then that's one step closer to a resolution, so, thank you.
Any other questions before we continue? All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing in Planning Case 20-13, a site plan for a 600-square-foot coffee shop at 10122 EGRIT Boulevard, Reprise Design. Anyone present who wishes to speak, public hearing. Do we know if the petitioner is on and if he wishes to speak?
Mr. Chair, it sounds like maybe they are, calling in remotely. Yes. Okay.
Can somebody, can you guys hear me?
Oh, yes, we can hear you. Could you please give your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is John Fanning. My address is 2485 Acorn Run in Victoria. I represent Coffee Holdings and Tailwind, who is the developer for this property. Reprise Design is the architect that did the application on our behalf. And so I appreciate the opportunity to come in and kind of talk about the project and hopefully during this discussion, answer some of the questions that were raised during your question and answer period. You know, I think overall, as you can see, the project is challenged. I know one of the commissioners mentioned the Big Lake project, which I was actually involved in, developed that site. So I would, I would really classify this site very similar on a lot of the challenges that we're dealing with. Obviously, the odd shape of the property, the easement, the stormwater really creates a lot of challenges. So when you look at the site, if, if it wasn't this project, I don't know what else could develop there because of the size of the building and what we're trying to do. So I think when you, when you look at a lot of the deviations that we're talking about and, you know, some of the requests, it's really related to a lot of the challenges that we're dealing with the site. Again, setbacks, the easement as it relates to the electrical easements and just the configuration of the property as a whole. And so, you know, a couple of the questions I know that came up, you know, one of the things, you know, talking about the, the car stacking and the traffic. When you look at the site plan, you know, keep in mind, we have about a 13-car stack that we can do on the site and it was, it was designed for that intent, to alleviate the traffic and really manage the traffic incoming and outgoing as part of that stacking process. One of the questions that came up are regarding the, the turning radius. Those things, when we laid out the site, obviously, this has been engineered with civil engineering and that's been taken into consideration, because we have to, obviously, ultimately, when this is submitted for permit and for construction, that would be addressed. So we do address that right up front to address the turning radius as it relates to emergency vehicles. You know, as far as the parking questions that came up, I think... Um, you know, as far as the parking questions that came up, um, I think, uh, you know, one of the commissioners that, that spoke later, and again, I apologize, don't, uh, don't know everybody's names, um, you know, those, those dedicated spots or, or I guess sign spots, um, really address the walk-up, um, you know, so the customers. I mean, again, this is a focused drive-through-only situation, um, and service. Yes, you have an outdoor patio that's extremely small, um, so really, those, those dedicated spots are really to help address that walk-up service. Um, you know, if somebody orders ahead, then they can order, park right there, walk up to the window, walk right back. So the time that they spend in that parking lot is very, very minimal. Um, and so when you look at the staffing, um, I know somebody asked the question, you know, typically a facility like this, again, I'm gonna refer to Big Lake, because I was involved with that, along with, um, a couple other ones in St. Peter, um, similar situation, Burnsville, uh, Jordan, um, you know, those sites as well, actually had less parking, and we have not found a challenge with parking at all, because again, it's focused around the drive-through, the quick-service type approach. Um, and, you know, when we look at the, the employee count, usually, uh, the employees on staff there at one time are typically about five people max, um, because when you look at the space of the building, that's typically how it can, uh, accommodate, uh, that number of employees as well. Um, as far as the hours of operation, uh, one of the questions that came up, um, typically what we found in the other locations, again, they slightly differ depending on the markets, but usually they're from 5:30 in the morning till approximately 6 o'clock at night. There might be a deviation certain times of the year, um, or certain, uh, times, but typically it's early morning, and then usually they're done by early evening, um, because again, it's really driven because of the drive-through traffic. Um, this is not something that, i- if you've been to any of the other sit-down caribous, you know, where you've got the indoor seating, a lot of times those hours are longer, because they are accommodating people coming in. In this case, it's just really driven around the traffic patterns of the day, um, and is really, you know, focused, again, mostly on the going-to-work traffic. Um, hence, that's where we position it, based on the, uh, the choice of the real estate. Um, as far as the restroom that was labeled, yes, there will be a restroom in there. I think, uh, the note on there was just the plan that was used as part of the submittal, um, because, uh, you know, you look at, a lot of it is grayed out on the inside, but it shows the walls. Um, there will be a restroom, uh, obviously, we're required by code because of that, so that, that is, uh, not a question. Um, again, going back to, you know, some of the things that we are looking at is, um, you know, access, um, that was a question, and, uh, it was contemplated early on when we went into the purchase agreement, and we started working on the site plan and the conversations with staff, is that the, the drive and, and that a cross-access easement, um, would be, uh, would be implemented as a part of that, and that's been contemplated since day one when we started these, uh, uh, site plans, partly because we wanted to shift the driveway as far really west as we could, um, because on this type of property, off of Egritt Boulevard is the only access point we can have to the property. Um, and so, uh, our, our goal, and that was really part of the discussions that were had along the way, is that that driveway was really to push as far west as we can, and that's when the ca- conversation came up about the cross-access easement. And so that's been contemplated, uh, really prior to the submittal of the site plan to the city. Um, you know, as far as other things, again, some of the key, the key challenges that we're dealing with, um, that really makes the site undevelopable for anything beyond this, is really the easements, the setbacks, you know, and the stormwater. The stormwater is a big challenge, um, and that's something that we're working with right now with the, uh, the water, or, uh, if I remember, it's Rice Creek Watershed District. Um, uh, they're reviewing the plans and our, uh, our stormwater solution to make sure that we're observing and, uh, handling the stormwater as, as needed, as required for this type of site. And, you know, and again, I apply it to a little bit with Big Lake. I mean, I think when you look at the, this size of site and the type that it is, um, you know, really, I think, um, what we're doing, uh, in the, in the deviations that we're asking for, height of the building, really starts to define the scale of this type of site and the development of it. Um, and, you know, a- and I think that's really what's driving a lot of our requests, is how do we handle those? So, with that said, I am open to answer any questions that you, that you may have, and I've also got the architect online from Repriese Design, both Cory England and Charles Schatz, that might be able, or that could answer anything that I'm not able to answer.
Thank you. A question I have right, right away is, what are your plans for, uh, snow removal in the wintertime? Snow storage?
So part of that is, so part of that has been designed into the site as it relates to some of the landscape area that we'll be able to place, along with the storm basin, um, you know, to be able to place the snow. And then we've also made plans to that, depending on the snowfall, that it would be removed off the site if the site cannot handle, um, basically disposing of it or moving it on-site. So that has been addressed, and, uh, plans are in, 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 in place to be able to handle that.
Thank you. Commissioner, any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Couple of questions for the applicant here. Um, first, first question regarding parking and your existing examples. Uh, so we're at 16 stalls here, um, did you, how did you arrive at the conclusion that 16 was appropriate for the site? How many are you using at other sites? Um, can you expand upon that about how you arrived at 16?
Yes, I can, Chairman Commissioners. So, um, I can give you an example, the, the parking spots that we did in Big Lake, if I remember correctly, we did six parking spots. And I think the first couple that went in, we learned, um, of, you know, we're accommodating typically the number of parking, the parking requirement of the building. We came up with 16, because we wanted to make sure that we're not only accommodating employees, but again, help servicing some of the walk-ups that we do have, um, in addition to the, the patio seating. So, you know, again, what we tried to do, I think in this case, is really max out as much parking as we could, and to accommodate on the site, but still, uh, accommodate the, the traffic patterns and the ingress and egress safely, along with the stacking.
Okay, thank you very much. And then the other question I had was with respect to the walking paths. Um, there, I noticed there's an absence of a path from the walking path that follows Egritt to the south side there, to basically take that path to the, to the, to the walk-up from the south, which could come from the apartments or the, the development complex to there, which may result in either, uh, people having to walk up the hill to the stoplight and come to the patio, um, or they'll be cutting across your landscaping and then walking across there. Was there any consideration for a connection to that path to the south?
You know, I'm gonna, uh, on that one, I'm gonna defer to either Charles or Cory on that, 'cause I know they have been involved in some of the initial discussions when, you know, when the site and the sidewalk was being laid out. So, uh, Charles or Cory, could you answer that question?
Yes, uh, this is Cory England, I'm with Repriese Design. Um, and, um, we have gotten planning, or the staff report, and our civil engineers actually looked at connecting to that south path. We are somewhat limited in our ability to connect it, just because there is an existing retaining wall along the trail, but we are proposing, in our final construction plans, it'll be a new path that's just to the east of that retaining wall, that will connect the south part of the trail to the patio.
Yeah, I, I guess, I, I see on your plan here, you're, you're discussing the easterly, which is more towards the intersection. I guess I'm talking more towards the south side, closer to the infiltration basin, that would be effectively a crosswalk near your weight stalls to the island, and then to your existing crosswalk there to come up. If I was traveling north on Egritt, and I was able to walk off that path, have you looked at that space for a, a, uh, walking path or crosswalk across your parking lot there?
Let me just, uh, pull up the plan, I mean, real quick, so I don't want to forget the same thing as you are.
Um, my guess is what we could do to accommodate that is do, you know, i- if you're coming, you're talking the walk along Egritt, and then cutting across the landscape to that, basically the, the, the radius drive coming out of the drive-through, is that what you're referring to? That connection there?
Correct, yes, and with the engineering plan, there's an adjustment to that island as well.
Yep, so my guess is what we could do to accommodate that is, you know, do some sort of striping, you know, either stepping stones or something across the landscape to really provide a definitive path across, and then, um, you know, position the landscape to define a path that would then lead you, you know, again, um, some of the, the markings on the pavement to get to that island center, uh, where that radius is, define a path through to get to the, the markings, uh, to get the patio. So, I think we can accommodate that through some definition of the landscape and placement of the, the landscape, and then the, uh, the, the striping on the road itself.
Yeah, I, I guess my, my concern with that would be, um, towards the wintertime, um, I'm assuming you'll still be in operations, and folks may still wanna walk up, um, and I believe that walking path is required to be plowed, um, and the city will maintain that, but if it's in the landscaping only, uh, that would not be able to be plowed and cleared and maintained from an accessibility standpoint.
Um, yeah, and I, my understanding, Commissioner, that we, you know, once it's on our property, it's our responsibility to clear that path. So, um, you know, we would go from that main walk, and then it go into the landscape, and that would be our responsibility to clear that, especially if it was defined as a walking path. Um, so that's something that we would address as a property owner.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nablock.
I have a question for the applicant. Uh, in the application materials, um, I'm curious as to the design and the size of the patio proposed. Uh, on the plans, I've noticed I see four tables, and then I'm curious also, on the size, the design of, does that wrap around the corner of the building? And if there's a railing or any other features? Um, I believe there's, uh, parking for bicycles on the Egritt side, but I just wonder if there's any more specifics in regards to the patio.
Um, you know, so typically, uh, Commissioner, um, typically, Chairman and Commissioner, uh, typically when we do these patios, there is a separation, um, uh, you know, w- w- similar to what we did in Big Lake, we did a wrought iron fence that defined that space. Um, the wraparound patio, I think, just provided some, uh, additional seating area. Um, and so, those are something that will define, uh, further when we get into the construction drawings and the submittal to the city on how that lays out, uh, to give a rough layout of the, the tables. You know, again, in today's environment, that, that's ever-changing with social distancing, um, so that will be really laid out, um, as part of those construction documents. But I think to answer your question, there is a separation, there is a wrought iron fence that will separate the patio, um, from, uh, from the roadway, and then a, a walkway through or an access point into that patio.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner, any other questions for the petitioner at this time? Uh, hearing done, uh, I guess we will then close the public hearing. Thank you for your comments. Uh, Commissioner, your thoughts, concerns?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
So, um, on the whole, I, I'm actually really impressed with what we've been able to shoehorn into this, into this property, that is a, a challenging development for, I, I, I think, you know, 25 minutes worth of presentation of challenges. Um, so it, I, I'm glad to see that we've got something coming in here, and anecdotally, I have, um, a lot of positive feedback of coffee on the Boulevard, finally. Um, so, uh, the, there is, there is a, there is a citizen desire for this. Um, ironically, the questions that I, that I also received backward, why is there so much parking here? Um, there, there was some of that response, was saying, hey, can we, do we need this much parking space for a business that's gonna effectively have cars there for 10 to 30 minutes or less? Um, so I, I'm not as concerned about the parking. I think, I think, you know, this could've been as low as 12, and I would've been comfortable with it, but 16, and if the applicant is happy with 16, I'm happy with 16. Um, the, the, really, the only piece that I wanna see added in here is, is a good, solid trail, trail connection to the walking path along Egritt, um, before the, the retaining wall, as well as the ones that are connected to the one on the Boulevard, and the one, um, uh, to Egritt on the north side by the corner. I, I, I do feel that we're just asking for a desire path from every, anybody walking up from the dam, if there isn't something that's clean and established there. And because it's a drive-through, there will be a lot of traffic moving through and around there, and having a very clearly marked space where pedestrians will cross that, that radius twice effectively, if they're coming from that path. Um, I, I think it's good to do that, I think it's good to make that clear out, and that, that'd be the only thing that I'd wanna add there, um, a- add to these, to our recommendation tonight, other than, and then potentially, uh, having that conversation about the cross-access and easement, since I believe we would have to add that as well as an item. But I, I'm anecdotally very, very happy with what we've managed to accomplish with this, and, and especially with the landscape plan, it's, it's a very well-thought-out and clear design.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nablock.
Um, I just wanna add also that I'm, the one thing that I was concerned, among many things, was, um, the application of the landscape, uh, that, uh, we've been find, I've been finding myself, that, um, a lot of developments have sometimes taken or challenged by the cutting down of a lot of green space, but I like this application with, with the accommodations that it's made, with all the greenery and the other, especially since it's bordering Coon Rapids Boulevard. So, um, with a difficult lot for development, um, I think the majority of all the, uh, issues pertaining to it, I think they've, the, the accommodations to allow this, uh, development to go in this difficult corner, um, I think it's very good, because if you look at it, it is a very notable corner going to the Coon Rapids Dam, and we don't wanna sacrifice, uh, the green space as you're entering the Coon Rapids Dam area. Um, I think that, um, the addition of all the landscaping addition is very important and critical, um, and that one thing is, I have noticed and missed the gardening along just that little bit of space, uh, bordering the Coon Rapids Dam sign. Uh, it's very small, but over the years, it is something small like that, that has, uh, does have a little bit of an impact for all the traffic, for people driving by, so I just wanna commend the applicant of ensuring and make, taking into account, uh, the landscape greenery as part of this application.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikle.
Uh, Coon Rapids Boulevard as a whole is not really known for, uh, superior landscaping or superior, not kept up really well, in my opinion. And so, if they're gonna be taking over the area where the, uh, community flower garden is, it says that they're gonna take over part of it, but yet be responsible for the entire property, is that correct? My concern is, or my hope is, I guess, that they would do a better job. You know, the, the gardens, years passed, I think, I think some of the people probably aged out, and are not, the people that used to take care of it, they're not able anymore. But I hope that the, the petitioner will do a better job, because I'd like to see the whole of Coon Rapids Boulevard, uh, start to look better. Just kind of a personal opinion.
Mr. Chair, if I could just address Commissioner Heikle's point, certainly the applicant can chime in here as well. It's my understanding that they're not gonna maintain the community garden, the community garden is gonna go away, and the portion of it that's on their property, we are recommending that they, you know, incorporate some elements of their existing landscape plan, and then I think, you know, probably just be turf grass out in the, out in the right-of-way where the rest of the garden is, but that's off their property, they wouldn't, I don't know that they'd be responsible for, for that, so.
But they, they hopefully still will be keeping it, keeping it looking good.
I think that's the, yeah, that's the assumption.
Commissioner?
Um, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey?
Um, I can make a motion, but, um, is it complicated? Um, I think this is a real unique, um, property, for sure. This is probably the best little plan I could see going in there. I'm, I'm impressed with it. I think there's a need, it, it gets well-known, and it'll be well-used. So, I'm, I'm impressed with it, I can...
Mr. Chair, can I just make a suggestion on how we sort of approach this? To Commissioner Casey, if you're gonna make the motion?
Sure.
So I think there's actually three pieces of this, we should probably take them in, kind of in sequence. So the first is, um, the So the first is, um, the site plan, which has eight, now possibly nine, conditions related to Commissioner Geisler's comment on the, the walkway, um, and possibly clarification under condition number seven, but I think we should deal with the site plan as maybe one motion and an action, and then deal with the use flexibility and the design and dimensional flexibility as two separate, uh, additional actions.
Okay. Um, and Mr. or Commissioner Geisler, that was, you wanted to ensure that there was a well-defined walkway?
Yeah, I, I was, uh, going to look to add, a, a path be added to connect the walking path along Egritt, and in a, the south walking path along Egritt be connected to the island and existing crosswalk in the radius term. And then just a question for Mr. Frenelius, do we need to add the cross-access easement as a condition of approval for this?
Um, Commissioner Geisler, I don't think so, that's a separate, um, action that could very well be, um, the applicant mentioned that there was, uh, that that was contemplated in the purchase agreement, so I think that's covered, I don't think we need to make that as a separate condition of approval.
And Mr. Frenelius, we don't need any condition for any park fees of any kind?
Mr. Chair, what's on the next action?
Yeah, that will be a separate item related to the plat.
All right.
Okay. Ready? Why did I volunteer for this?
We've got your back.
No, good. Um, Mr. Chair, I will make a motion, um, that we approve the proposed site plan with the following conditions. All engineering comments be addressed. Number two, all comments from Anoka County Highway be addressed. Number three, compliance with Title XI. Number four, a site security agreement with the city be executed. Number five, the preliminary and final plat are approved. Number six, use flexibility for density and design flexibility are approved. Number seven, a connection between the patio and the Coon Rapids Boulevard trail be installed. And I will add as a condition seven B, that the trash enclosure must be constructed of brick or stone to match the building. Number eight, the existing garden along Coon Rapids Boulevard be noted as being saved or removed and replaced with new landscaping. The applicant is responsible for maintenance of the garden area or new landscaping that is on their property. And number nine, um, to ensure a path, a walkway path from the south walkway on Egritt to connect with the patio area, does that define it well enough? That would be, um, number nine. And we deal with that one first?
Second.
Second, yeah.
Motion by Casey, second by Geisler, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, under, um, condition number six, I think there's a typo that says use flexibility for density, I think that should be dimensional and design flexibility are approved. I, we, we, when we prepared the report, we had a typo there, so replace that word, but otherwise I think the rest of it is fine.
Yeah, number six, use flexibility, dimensional and design flexibility are approved.
Yep, that should do.
All right, we have the motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have, uh, findings on use flexibility.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmoki.
So I can go ahead and, I'll make the motion on the recommend approval of the use flexibility based on the following. Uh, the findings offered for use flexibility for the drive-through indicate that the modification significantly advances the intent of this section. The modification is necessary to develop the property in an efficient, well-organized way, and the plan provides significant site amenities, buffers, and other elements to offset any potential harmful effects that could be caused by the use.
Second. Motion by Schmoki, second by Geisler, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, does, this goes to the council as a recommendation? Okay.
Did I say that incorrectly?
I don't know, but it...
Okay.
That's clarified, it's a recommendation to them. Uh, that, that was my only point.
Hearing no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And then finally, we have findings for design and dimensional flexibility.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question on this one, the way it's written in here, this one, this third one does state that it is, "Commission approve," so is that what we are doing, or is this also a recommendation to approve?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schmoki, no, this would be, this would be a decision by the planning commission tonight, so these would be your findings as a commission related to design and dimensional flexibility.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmoki.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that the planning commission approve design and dimensional flexibility based on the following. Uh, the following findings are offered for design flexibility for 30% stone, 60% glass, 2,000 square foot building, um, a setback from, building setback from Coon Rapids Boulevard, and two-story story building expression. The modification is necessary to respond to site conditions, will result in better integration of uses or, um, additional public amenities, and will further the intent of this section. Does the next one go in with this, then?
Yes.
Please, thank you. The following findings are offered for dimensional flexibility for drive aisle setback from Ego, Egritt Boulevard and number of parking spaces. The modification will result in better integration of uses or additional public amenities that will further the intent of this section.
Second. Motion by Schmoki, second by Geisler, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission on the site plan approval. Dimensional and design flexibility can be appealed to the city council within 10 days if someone so chooses, and it was also a recommendation by the planning commission on use flexibility to the city council, which will be heard at their September 1st meeting. And, Mr. Frenelius, planning case 20-12 preliminary plat for Egritt Station 10122 Egritt Boulevard reprise design.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So this is a preliminary plat, um, in conjunction with the previous land use item. Uh, property is located at 10122 Egritt Boulevard. Uh, the applicant is proposing to replat the property. Just as some background information, this, uh, site was part of the Port River Walk development, uh, Port River Walk first edition plat that the city and the HRA, uh, platted as part of the central development. It was planted as an outlot, so it's, it's not developable. Um, so in this case, uh, the applicant needs to re, uh, replat the property. Site is zoned office, the plat does meet, uh, all of our dimensional requirements of the city subdivision rec, um, regulations, um, so it needs to be platted in order to be developed. So, um, tonight's actions are to conduct a public hearing, uh, make a recommendation to the city council, and the city council would then consider, uh, the preliminary plat on September 1st. And we are recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Frenelius. Any questions at this time for Mr. Frenelius? Hearing none, we will open a public hearing in planning case 20-12 preliminary plat for Egritt Station 10122 Egritt Boulevard reprise design. Anyone wish to speak at this public hearing? And is there anything the petitioner wishes to add on this case?
Uh, this is John Fanning again, uh, 2485 Acorn Run, Victoria, uh, on behalf of Tailwinds and Kirby Coffee. Uh, let me do that. There we go. Uh, no, I think it's, uh, it's pretty straightforward, and I think it, uh, it applies to, uh, obviously the, uh, the first middle and, uh, the approvals that you did initially, uh, but here to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. This time we will close the public hearing. Commissioner.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
If, uh, no one has anything to question or add to it, I'll, will you entertain, uh, a recommendation?
Hmm, go ahead.
Okay, in planning case 20-12, the commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat with the following conditions. One, all engineering comments be addressed. Two, all Anoka County Highway Department comments be addressed. And three, park dedication fees in the amount of $5,000 be paid prior to the release of the plat.
Second.
Motion by Knoblock, second by Casey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is a recommendation by the planning commission and decision by the city council at their September 1st meeting. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Frenelius, anything under other business?
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, I know this is customarily when Mr. Harlecker provides updates on, um, current, current developments. I guess just a couple of things to, to, um, mention to the commission. Obviously, for the September meeting, we'll have the two items that we discussed earlier this evening, uh, related to that North, North Dale parcel. I'm unaware of any other applications at this point in time, I don't, I don't recall if the, if we've received anything, um, so there may be additional items, but at a minimum, um, that will obviously be on your agenda for September 17th. Also mentioned that we did receive a letter, the city received a letter, uh, addressed to, to Mayor Cook, uh, from the DNR, uh, formal notice that we, um, for those of you that recall, um, all the work that was done by the city, the DNR, actually all the cities along the Mississippi River related to the Mississippi River Critical Corridor area, um, it actually predates my time here, uh, I think it goes back to 2014. There was a lot of discussion about updating the rules related to shoreline development along the, uh, along the river, um, so this is not necessarily a new topic, although it hasn't necessarily been on our radar, uh, but MINDOT went through the rulemaking process and then, um, finally put those rules in place, which then means that cities along the river, like Coon Rapids, um, need to update or, or adopt, um, an ordinance related to these new regulations. So we have a year from the date of that notice, um, uh, so roughly July, August of next year we'll need to, we'll need to adopt an ordinance. We do intend to, staff intends to workshop that with the council to get a little more direction on, um, what kind of public participation. I know there was, uh, probably more involvement a few years ago when this, when this topic was initially discussed. Given the pandemic and everything else that's going on, I think we want to try and figure out a way, uh, to allow the public to provide some input. That will also come before you as a commission eventually, uh, at some point during, during, um, during that adoption process, so you'll also see it as well, we'll provide some additional details on that when we get to that, um, in the coming months. Um, and then, um, I know this came up at the council meeting Tuesday night, and, and maybe you've driven by the area, uh, Menards along Main Street, there's a, I haven't seen it, but there's a big hole in the ground. Um, and so, I know, uh, one of our council members asked about it, um, so we did a little bit of research. So, what's going on there is that, um, Menards is doing a small modification to their garden center, which has then triggered some other things that they need to do related to stormwater. So what's, what's going on is they're redo, there's, I believe there's an underground stormwater system which they're having to modify in order to accommodate this, um, garden center, uh, expansion. It wasn't significant enough that would have triggered a site plan, but it did trigger stormwater review, engineering review, so, anyway, it's related to stormwater and a, and a garden center expansion. Scott did want me to mention that we did get permits in for, uh, permit application for the new creation daycare, that's the daycare in the Gateway Development, so they've submitted a, a permit application, that's, that's good to see. Um, and then, um, probably the other thing worth mentioning, although this is probably three weeks old news, um, city did have its official ribbon-cutting for, um, Hanson Boulevard Bridge Overpass, I know that was a pretty, um, exciting event, a big milestone, uh, long history with that project, so, city is very excited that that's now open and fully functional, um, so, that's really all that I think I have for you tonight.
Thank you.
Chair Schwartz, I have a question.
Commissioner Knoblock.
For, Mr. Frenelius, um, is there any word of development in regards to, uh, the lot to beside the, in the Gateway Development area, the Honda dealership? The free space that I think a Mazda dealership was supposed to go in there? Is there any word on the progress or development of that?
Uh, Commissioner Knoblock, that's the property that, uh, I forget the name of the other...
Walzer, isn't it?
Yeah, car dealership. Walzer owns that, um, I have not heard an update on what the status is of, of that dealership, so...
Thanks.
We can inquire and provide you with an update at your next meeting. Be good to know.
Their plan is over, is over two years old at this point, so it's expired, and they, they would need to reapply.
Right. I think that's correct.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know.
Yeah, well, we can, we can make contact with them and find out.
All right, that's all I have, thanks.
Commissioner Heikle.
Uh, is there anything planned for that? I think it was an Amaco Station right across the street from the current Holiday Station on Hanson and Gateway. There's a, rather, just, you know, decrepit building there, I'm just kind of wondering...
It's the old BP.
Oh, sure, yeah. Commissioner Heikle, um, I haven't seen anything that's come, come across our desk. I know that it's, it's been closed for a while, um, but I don't know if there are any plans to redevelop it. I haven't, I haven't talked to a developer about it.
And, Mr. Frenelius, um, do you, do you have any update on the Port Evergreen Apartments that are going up, and how those are progressing, or how close they are to opening?
Yeah, Commissioner Geisler, uh, well, I drive by it every day on my morning commute, um, so the Port Evergreen Apartments are the 168-unit development, um, at 10, um, 610, University Avenue, I guess that's on the east side. Um, yeah, it's coming along, I don't have an update in terms of, of when they're going to occupy it, I know the building is up, they're putting windows in, trying to enclose it, um, some of the exterior finishing is, is, is being worked on right now as we speak. So they're closing it in, which is a, which is a good sign. Um, I, you know, it will be sometime in 2021 when it, before it's ready for occupancy, but they're making very good progress on it.
Awesome.
Anyone else have anything?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Schmoki, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? He needs adjourned.